All right, we're going to go ahead and call, let me make sure this is positioned correctly. We're going to go ahead and call the January 10th meeting of the Lansing City Council to order, let the record reflect a starting time of 7:03. I want to remind folks, based on recommendations from the CDC, the City Council is still requesting that folks wear, while they're in the chambers, masks to ensure the safeties of all. And as a public school teacher that wears this thing all day, every day, I certainly understand that it is, you know, we're over this, so to speak, but we certainly appreciate everything you all have done as you come into these chambers to make sure that everybody, particularly our most vulnerable, stays safe. So, thanks again. That being said, Clerk Swob, would you please take the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Betts is absent. Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are seven members present to quorum.
That brings us to the meditation and pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone at the dais that would like anybody to be remembered during a moment of meditation and reflection? The only hand up I see is Councilwoman Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. We lost another neighborhood leader this past week. Betty Drayer was a mainstay in the Baker-Denora neighborhood. Betty grew up in that neighborhood and served that neighborhood as a mentor, a neighborhood advocate. She worked tirelessly to make a difference in the Baker-Denora neighborhood. Betty could be seen going door-to-door with the community police officer, introducing them to neighbors so that they would know who was patrolling their streets. You would often find Betty delivering food to those that needed it, taking people to the doctors, to the grocery store, taking gift baskets to those that were sick, or whether it was a holiday, making gift baskets to let people know that they were remembered. Betty had a long battle with cancer, and in her passing, she made it clear that she did not want to have a funeral or a memorial service. What she wanted was her neighbors and the people in the community, they so chose to make a donation to the Lansing Police Department, to the Problem Solving Fund. That donation check can be written to the Lansing Police Department, Problem Solving, and if you put Betty Drayer's name in the memo, and that can be sent to 120 West Michigan Avenue, 48933. So, if we could remember Betty and her family tonight, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, I did forget to mention, she was a fire commissioner, and the people at the fire department, she was somebody that was dependable, she was at graduation, she was at promotion, she was there relentlessly promoting the Lansing Fire Department as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Shore.
I don't know if this is the proper time to do this, but I want to thank Councilwoman Wood for that. Betty is a very good friend, I know to all of us, but I know Councilwoman Wood certainly is the senior member here, so I do appreciate that, Councilwoman Wood. Betty is a good friend. I posted my thoughts and Councilman, Council President Hussein, I know you saw it, I posted my thoughts on social media, but Betty is a, it's a loss for the neighborhoods, it's a loss for the city, it's a loss for each one of us, as I know she was a friend to each one of us. So, I was pretty broken up by that, knowing that she'd been sick, but not that sick. And my thoughts go out to her, to everyone who loved her. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's fully appropriate. I'd add too, although, you know, when we talk about Betty, we often talk about the work that she did in the Baker-Denora area, she really did have a heart for the entire city. And she served as a mentor to so many of us, myself dating back to when I was on the Lansing Park Board, as a matter of fact. And she's one of the reasons I decided to, one of the many people and reasons that I decided to run for City Council. And so, I certainly appreciated the opportunity to be counseled by Betty and to learn from Betty, in terms of what public service really is about. That being said, I'm not seeing anyone else, so if you would please rise and join us in a moment of meditation, we'd appreciate it.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the printed council proceedings of January 3rd.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. At this time, I would move the minutes of January 3rd as written.
All right, there is a motion on the floor, is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And we are to consideration of late items, and I understand we do have late items this evening.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. At this time, I would move for the consideration to suspend Rule Number Nine, so that we can consider late items. There are two late items that we would be dealing with under action items. One is the resignation of Councilmember Betts from the First Ward, and the second is the process being determined for the replacement. So, with that, I would move to suspend the rules.
There is a motion on the floor, is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies and presentations. Our first special ceremony is a tribute in recognition of Pastor Melvin T. Jones upon his retirement.
And my understanding is Councilwoman Spitzley is going to take this on. Councilwoman Spitzley, you have the floor. And Mayor Shore as well, fantastic. Thank you so much. There is a resolution, or I'm sorry, a motion to approve a resolution on the floor, is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As he told you, I go straight down 69 to Pensacola, so, you know, if you let me know where you are, I'll stop by and knock on the door and, you know, have a meal or something. I haven't got any.
Can I step in just for a moment, folks? I'm so sorry. I am getting messages that the floor mic is not working, so if we could get, if we could get City TV on that, we'd certainly appreciate it.
I go down 69 to Pensacola, that's all I'm telling you. Okay? So, we wanted just a token of our appreciation for you guys and all the stuff you've done in the city. My son wanted me to tell you, you know, that hello, and you were his music teacher, and so when I was telling him I was doing this, he was like, "Oh, hello, hello." So, hello. So, we wanted to give you this, and thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I get to give you this one too?
I will. I will.
I will mention that my wife did tell me to say aye as well, and that she's going to miss your sermons at the First Prez, whenever you show up at First Prez, they're going to miss you quite a bit.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, please step up to the mic. Appreciate you being here, absolutely. Congratulations, yeah.
Well, I guess I'll go before my husband. It's been an absolute privilege to serve in the Lansing School District for over 22 years, and it's been a privilege to be at Union, of course, for 37 years. To develop a puppet ministry that has gone international as well as national, and to be able to share with so many in the Lansing community. As we were coming down, I looked over at the Capitol, and I remembered our, my babies, that's what I called them. I remembered my babies taking my band over there, and we played right in front of the Capitol. We played here, in the chamber, for Martin Luther King celebrations, and so truly, Lansing is home for us, even though we may be getting closer to our children, which is our reason for going to Alabaster, Alabama. Our hearts will still be here, not just with you, the community, but more than that, with the children, for me, because we are nothing if we don't really have our little ones to bring up, to be at the best that they could be. Thank you for honoring my husband, thank you for bringing me along with it, but most of all, thank you for being you, thank you for the service that you give, because truly, without those who would give the service, where would we be? God bless you, and we love you.
I often dread my wife having remarks first, because she always does a better job than I do. I believe I first got involved with city life under Dick Letts, and I recall becoming president of the Human Relations Department here in the city, which acquainted me with a number of city leaders, and from that point, I've had a very meaningful relationship with the city. And I am deeply honored, to be honored, by the city for the labor of love over these many, many years. I am humbled and appreciative of this acknowledgement, and I will hold it dear. I do, however, think that the weather is better in Alabaster, Alabama.
At least today.
And we were fortunate to purchase a very nice home there, and we're looking forward to time with family, and of course, I have grandkids, and they are waiting, they have been all over the house down there, and helping us get prepared for the move. Let me share this insight with you. You don't like moving after 37 years, when you have some of your things, some of your children's things, all of those things in the house that need to be sorted through before you move. It's not, well, I hope you get the message. Mayor, it's been my honor and pleasure to work with you. I have found you to be sincere and honorable and well-intentioned as a leader of the city, and I am glad to have had the opportunity to work hand-in-hand with you on a number of issues. And again, to the members of City Council, thank you for this honor, it is deeply appreciated.
Vice President Wood.
I just wanted to add to the comments that Councilmember Spitzley said. We are definitely going to miss Reverend Jones and the First Lady and their advocacy in the community. Those of us that have had the opportunity to listen to and preach, we will miss that. But I think the thing I will miss the most is his voice. Those of us that have been there when he has sung, it has touched our soul, so that too, we will, we will miss that voice. So, thank you very much.
Other Councilmember comments? All right, seeing none, thank you. Oh, sorry, Councilwoman Spitzley.
All I can say is you told me where you live, so it's over. I heard it. Peter let me know too, so I wrote it down, so.
All right, then, there you go.
All right, thank you.
Okay, now, we will have the reading of committee assignments into the record by President Hussein.
Sure. So, Vice President Wood and myself met after last Monday's meeting. We have talked to everybody as part of this body, and we really, you know, we worked hard this year to ensure that with regard to committee structure, that we had strong, sound committee structure, leadership that we believed would empower. We wanted some measure of continuity on these committees, but we also wanted to give some folks an opportunity to serve, maybe in some arenas where they have not yet had an opportunity to serve. And so, I hope we were able to achieve that, and at this point, I will read the committee assignments, including Chair, Vice Chair, and Member-at-Large into the record. First, we have the Committee on Public Safety. Carol Wood will be the Chair, Adam Hussein, myself, will be the Vice Chair, and Jeffrey Brown will be a member. In terms of the Committee on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, sorry, Brian T. Jackson will be the Chair, Jeffrey Brown will be the Vice Chair, and myself, Adam Hussein, will be a member. With regards to the Committee on City Operations, Patricia Spitzley will be the Chair, Peter Spatafor will be the Vice Chair, and myself will be, Adam Hussein will be a member. The Committee on Development and Planning, we will have Jeremy Garza as Chair, Patricia Spitzley as Vice Chair, and Brian T. Jackson as a member. With regard to the Committee on Ways and Means, Peter Spatafor will be the Chair, Jeremy Garza will be the Vice Chair, and Carol Wood will be a member. Our Ad-Hoc Audit Committee will continue in its role this year with quarterly meetings. The Chair will continue to be Peter Spatafor, and the Vice Chair will continue to be Carol Wood. And then, with regards to council rules, we do have a Committee on Personnel, and the rules actually dictate the structure essentially of that committee. Carol Wood will serve as Chair, I, Adam Hussein, will serve as Vice Chair, Peter Spatafor will serve as a member, as well as Brian T. Jackson. We also have a number of outside boards and agencies that we have to appoint members to. I will read those appointments into the record as well. For the Capital Area Michigan Works Administrative Board, we need three members. Those members will be Councilmembers Hussein, Brown, and Spitzley. For the Capital Region Airport Authority, we have one appointment to that particular authority, Councilmember Spatafor will be that member. For the City of Lansing and Charter Township of Lansing Liaison Commission, we again have one position with regard to that commission, and that will be Councilmember Jackson. We also have one position with regard to the Community Correction Advisory Board, that also will be Councilmember Jackson. As it pertains to Downtown Lansing, Inc., the representative from this body will be Councilmember Spitzley. With regards to the Employee Retirement Board, our representative will be Councilmember Garza. With regard to the Police and Fire Retirement Committee, or Board, sorry, our representative will be Councilmember Wood. With regard to the Greater Lansing Convention and Visitor Bureau, this is a liaison position, our representative will be Councilmember Wood. As it pertains to the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority, our member, our representative, sorry, will be Councilmember Garza. With regard to the Planning Board, typically what we do is we pull individuals from the Economic Development and Planning Committee. We have Councilmembers Garza and Jackson representing this body as part of the Planning Board. In terms of Tri-County on Aging Consortium Board, we have two members that we need to appoint. Those members will be Councilmembers Spitzley and myself. And then, for the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, we have three members that we need to appoint, and those members will be Councilmembers Spatafor, Brown, and then City Clerk Swob. Any questions, comments? Let me just tell you that I really appreciate, oh, sorry, Vice President Wood. I'm not going to read that. Yeah. This was actually a really, really easy process in talking to you all, certainly appreciate the ability to, you know, shake things up just a little bit, get some folks into some positions where maybe they weren't comfortable, you know, at the outset, or maybe they didn't have, you know, past experience. The other pieces, there were, you know, particularly with the outside boards and agencies, there were folks that, you know, quite a few folks that wanted to be on some of the same boards and agencies, and when I came to members of this particular body to let, you know, folks know that more than one had jumped in, folks were willing to step back and allow somebody the opportunity to step in where maybe they haven't had that opportunity before. So, I just really want to say how much I appreciate you all coordinating with Vice President Wood and myself, so we could get these set with, it just was not a contentious situation, which we really appreciate. We have tonight, I'm going to go ahead and add, actually, I'm going to pull it up real quick, I'm going to add an additional presentation, and I do believe that we have Parks Director Brett Koschinski in the gallery. Brett, if you wouldn't mind coming out down, we're going to actually invite you into the gallery, we're going to ask that you sit at the table right here, we know that the mic is working. We have, we were actually alerted to a situation last week with regard to some lights being taken out of both Regent and Bancroft Parks. And so, Vice President Wood, myself, other members of this body, we engaged in, at quite a high frequency, quite frankly, at the end of last week and into the weekend, our administration with regards to this, and so, we wanted to have a presentation on decisions that were made, what went into those decisions, and I also wanted, because I know a number of people in the gallery are here to speak to this particular issue, I wanted to have this on the agenda as a presentation, so that those folks that are here to speak to this issue will actually have the opportunity now as part of the first public comment tonight, when folks are actually addressing legislative matters, okay? So, Mr. Koschinski, I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor over to you with regards to the lights in Regent and Bancroft Park.
So, at Bancroft Park, there are a couple of loops there, a couple of years back, meaning probably five now, we eliminated vehicle traffic from the lower loop, or the southern loop there at Bancroft Park. There were lights that went throughout this area, there were also lights in the area that we used to flood for an ice skating rink. All total, this is about 15 lights in that area. We will be keeping the lights that are by the building. For building code, we will also keep them in the parking area, which is right near the entrance, right near the building or warming house as well. So, again, that, when we eliminated that vehicle traffic through there, we did not remove the lights at that time, and those were the lights that we removed at this time. the lights at that time, and those were the lights that we removed at this time. With regards to Regent Park, again, we are not eliminating all of the lights from Regent Park. There were three poles in there. We are keeping the one that is by the playground and in closest view to the, to the street there, which is Elizabeth Street. So as far as the reasons for that, Bancroft Park, as you know, is a very heavily wooded area with a lot of very mature trees. We have had situations in other parks like this. I think you can remember at Moore's Park here most recently, where there was discussion about power lines in the areas of the park and removal of trees or heavily trimmed trees to allow for the power lines there. We had a similar situation at Fenner. On the east side of Fenner, near where it butts up against Evergreen Cemetery, we have a building, storage building at Evergreen Cemetery. A wide swath of land was cleared in that area to allow for that power back to the building. These are situations that I did not feel that we needed those lights in Bancroft Park on that loop because we are not allowing vehicle traffic back there. We do have park hours there of dawn till dusk. And when you have a situation where you have power lines and the mature trees, knowing that you have what's called a blue sky approach, meaning all limbs above those power lines can be removed, that presents an issue to us in those forested areas. So many of these lights in both Bancroft and Regent were not operational, were not operational for a number of years. How many? I do not know. But they were not, were not in operation, all of those lights at both of those parks. So this has, and this has created a number of questions from folks and statements. Statements such as, we are removing all lights in all parks. That is not true. We have removed park, lights in, some of the lights in these two parks, but that is it. We are not removing all lights in all parks. It has also led to, we are removing these lights to sell parkland and to sell these specific parks. That is not true. And I can go through all of the steps for park sale, but I think we all know that and the process that it takes for that. We are keeping again the lights by the playground there at Regent and around the buildings and parking area at Bancroft. Regent Park does not have a parking area. And again, off Elizabeth Street there is what we want to see as far as the playground area there. Other things that have come up is that where, where we like to put lights in parks is by our parking areas and by our buildings for building safety code. When we're talking about the wooded areas and the forested areas with regards to our power lines that go through there, it is not a good situation when we have to trim back or remove trees for those power in that area. We are not looking to light the field at Bancroft as we no longer have skating there. And so these were really the decisions that were made for removal of those lights. This was in no way an effort that we are doing in every park. In fact, different parks, depending on the area, we are replacing lights in certain parking lots, in certain areas. We are changing those out. We are changing those out for energy efficiency reasons. We are changing those out for security reasons based on calls, et cetera, and comments that you guys have received with regards to situations. The most recent being the parking lot at Moore's Park at the dam. So those are the situations that we have. There's been a lot out there again as far as sale of parkland because of this. There's been a lot out there about doing this in all of the parks, and that is just not factual. There's also been rumors out there about us removing the warming house at Bancroft. That is not factual either. And in fact, I think the next step for that building is to replace the roof there. So those are what I had pending any questions from Council.
Do we have any questions or comments from Council? Vice President Wood.
Just a couple because I do see that there is on the agenda a letter from Nancy Malo, and this has been referred to the Public Safety Committee, so this will be taken up there as well. But the two questions I have for you Brett is, one, did you have a conversation with LPD in making this decision? And two, did you reach out to the Friends of Bancroft or the neighborhood organization?
So regarding the LPD, we did have a conversation with LPD based on number of calls, et cetera, that have taken place in those areas and, and surrounding those parks. We did not reach out to either Eastside Neighborhood Organization or to the Friends of Bancroft in regards to the removal of the old infrastructure there.
All right. I won't belabor the point here. Again, this is something that we will take up in public safety as well. Thank you.
Are there council comments or questions? Seeing none. We really appreciate you being here tonight Brett, thank you.
Okay, we are to comments by Councilmembers on the City Clerk.
Do we have any councilmember comments? Councilmember Spatafor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to really quick touch, touch on a point. A former member of this body contacted me over the holidays to, wanted to make sure to express his thanks and appreciation for firefighters Green, Darkest, Castillo, Scott, and Hanson from the Grand Avenue Fire Station. You all know Charlie Kramer. His son injured his finger pretty badly on Christmas, and by the time they got to urgent care, it was closed, and the swelling had gotten pretty bad. So they stopped by the fire station, and the folks there were able to help him out. So he wanted me to make sure that they were recognized at Council this evening. So I'm doing that for Charlie and as well as for firefighters Green, Darkest, Castillo, Scott, and Hanson. Thank you for your service to our residents and city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to make a comment about our current COVID fatigue that we probably are all facing. This is year three of the pandemic, but people are still dying at a high rate. And as I was lounging Sunday when Councilman Hussein called me about a different thing, I was watching World War II stuff, and it was like the Battle of Okinawa, 1,000 people, and how horrible it was for the public and everything, and all these battles that killed so many people. But we're still, people are dying that often every few days in our country still, so it's still very real. And I know we got vaccines, but as a parent who has a six-year-old who just got her second shot, and my son who's three, he can't get any shots, it's just still scary for, for the people because not everybody has a choice to get the vaccine or not, which I would still encourage everybody to do that. And then kind of on that same note, if we could, and I know it's possible, to have a hybrid model so that people can still participate by Zoom, we do it in the courts where we're in person and there's still like a victim or somebody who wants to speak, they're still on the screen speaking and everybody can hear them, and there's a person who can control whether they're coming in or out. I know it's possible. So it should be a goal of ours to do that. Even though there's a lot of people here today, it's really, you know, not been that many people, and I wonder what the turnout would be as far as participation if we had that option available. And we just owe it to try to make that happen, I think. So those are my comments.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, just so you don't think I'm ambushing the mayor, I did talk to him before we broke for break and said I was going to mention it. But we, you know, we're, we're experiencing some extreme cold weather these last few days. And, you know, we, we need to, one of the things that I wanted to have a discussion about is our policy on warming centers in the City of Lansing. Do we have a policy where we open up our community centers or things? I know that there, there was an article in Lansing State Journal about various other places, and I did ask Mr. Funkhauser about warming centers at CADA. But I do believe that as a city, we should have, we should also be participating. And so I would ask if at some point we could have a presentation on, you know, what, what our policy is, on how cold does it have to be to activate some sort of alert for warming? Do we have a list of warming centers? And if we do, can we figure out a way to let people know about them? Put them on the internet? Put them on our webpage? Maybe, you know, on our public service page so that folks can know where they can go during the day when it's cold and, and even at night if there are resources, and I know there are shelters and resources, I understand that. But if we can make that maybe a button at this point because it's so cold on our website so that people can, you know, have that information of where they can go during those cold days, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other councilmember comments? Vice President Wood.
Just want to remind those that are present with us, if you are here and we're going to speak on the lights at Bancroft or Regent Park, you can sign up on the blue sheet and speak at the beginning of the council meeting.
We appreciate that.
Thank you, President Hussein. Got to get used to saying that. We will, I, I first want to welcome our new intern for this term, Jessica Behrens. If you want to stand up and wave, she'll be helping us for the next several months with people getting filled out, signed up to speak regarding legislative and other city government-related matters and otherwise helping our office in the preparation of the city council agendas in minutes. So let's welcome Jessica Behrens, Senior at Michigan State University. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience with a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details of your community event. And seeing no one jumping up, go ahead to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters includes the, well, first off, there is a show cause hearing, so if you are the property owner at 4108 Deerfield and wish to speak, please fill out a green form. And then legislative matters includes items five through 20 on the agenda, items five through 20. And we will be picking the, taking, we already have several, we will be taking any final ones within the next two minutes. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Here, sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start out, Patricia, or Councilwoman Spitzley did alert me that she was going to be asking the question. I do appreciate that. I'm happy to have some folks come. The answer is that weather emergencies and things like that go through our, our Emergency Management Department and the Fire Department. They evaluate weather determining when there'll be an upcoming weather emergency. They use a whole variety of factors. They declare weather emergencies based on, on the advice of meteorological experts. They look at, they look at temperature, wind chill, duration, dew point, the variety of other things and how they interrelate. And they take each situation on a case-by-case basis, so there's not one specific metric that they use. Just so folks know, and, and we are working through the, the list as was suggested, there are a variety of places that people can go during the day. The, the library, Advent House, CADA, which you, which you heard about today, they're open after hours. We know that they're emergency shelters. We, we're working on putting together a list of, of places that people can go if the weather's too cold or too hot. Unfortunately, a lot of times that list includes like big box stores or Meyer Stores and Kroger Stores and others that are open 24 hours. And now with COVID, many of those stores don't want more people in their stores. So we've had a lot of stores opt out because of COVID. So we're, we're certainly going to work on putting together that list. HRCS is working on more day shelter and warming centers as well. So we are working through that, a meeting with our Emergency Management folks this week or early next week to further discuss this and what options. And then certainly we do look at options such as community centers and other things. Certainly opening community centers at night can be difficult because of staffing, and we may not have staff to do it. And then I'm, I'm always hesitant to take a community center offline during the day because, of course, we're seeing violence and other things where we need these, these centers open for programming for our kids and, and for others. So we are certainly working through that list, but the, the, the policy, I guess, is based on a variety of metrics. So we're happy to, to get that information, provide, you know, whatever you need, have Emergency Management come in and, and, and discuss that with Council. So thank you, Councilwoman Spitzley, and we'll, we'll get on that too. In terms of other things, I wanted to mention a few issues just for folks here to know. I had a good conversation with Councilwoman Wood. For Council to know, the Eaton County Board of Commissioners is considering an ordinance that will allow ORVs, off-road vehicles, to drive on county roads. I have expressed my very serious concern and opposition to this. We have seen, I mean, I just got done knocking doors, and I heard all over the city, people complaining about ORVs driving on roads everywhere. So I have expressed my concern. LPD has expressed their concern. Councilwoman Wood, she and I had a conversation. I believe she's going to be bringing something to Council. Thank you, Councilwoman. So we'll continue to push that. It's my understanding that Delhi, that Delta Township has been exempted. So I've requested certainly that same exemption, but I'm also concerned that people just don't know the difference between an Eaton County road and Ingham County road, and they're going to end up putting, using their ORVs on our roads, and it'll just cause more problems. So I have expressed my concern. I do it here publicly, and I appreciate your interest, Councilwoman, and that this will come before City Council. On a more positive note, I want to congratulate Neevalise. They had a great ribbon cutting over the weekend, new plant store right next to the Mikey 23 shop on Kalamazoo. We also had a good groundbreaking for the Lansing Shuffle, which is, is coming in the spring, right on the riverfront downtown. I want to congratulate a few people. I think she's watching. Judge Alderson, who has retired, had a wonderful retirement party. City Hall just isn't the same without you, Judge, but, but I wish you the best of luck as you move on to your next adventure. I want to congratulate Yvette Collins, for those who know her with AT&amp;T. And you all know her because she's everywhere in our community. She's on like three boards. She's retiring, so will be attending her retirement party, but I want to congratulate her. A few events coming up. We have our mobile food distribution this Saturday morning. I believe it is at Cristo Rey on Miller Road. Registration time is 7:00 AM for vehicles to line up, and distribution is from 9:00 to 11:00 or until the food runs out. So please share the, the word to anyone of need. And then we've got Friday, the 14th, is our HRCS MLK event that we have every year. This year it will be virtual, so we're looking forward to that. We have a participatory budget night from 6:30 to 7:30, which was targeted for the Second Ward, for Councilman Garza in the Second Ward. It was going to be in person, but unfortunately, we're moving it virtual due to COVID preparation. There are a few events that, that our Neighborhoods Department is working on. They're looking at January 21st to do ice skating in the Plaza. I believe it's 6:30 to, I have 6:30 to 8:30 written down, I could be wrong. Skates are available on a first-come, first-served basis. They're going to have hot cocoa and music provided. And then on February 2nd is snow tubing at Hawk Island. Again, pre-registration is needed. It's in the afternoon, I believe, but there's no school that day, is my understanding. So some cool outdoor events downtown and in South Lansing through our Neighborhoods Department. And as a reminder, February 4th, the Neighborhood Grant Application and Program Applications are due 5:00 PM. So for all the Neighborhood groups out there, please apply for the money that we have set aside for you and for your neighborhood, for neighborhood and civic organizations. And then finally, February 16th will be our next Neighborhood Resource Summit, which will be in the Fourth Ward. We're targeting it for Let's Community Center. We're targeting it for Let's Community Center from 6:00 to 8:00 PM for Councilman Jackson, who stepped away. And hopefully, we'll be able to do that in person, but we will adjust if we needed, need due to COVID. Sorry to take so much time, Mr. President, but thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you, Mayor Shore.
Okay, we do have a show cause hearing tonight in consideration of orders to make safer demolish to the owners of property located at 4108 Deerfield Avenue.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So yes, show cause hearing, it's at 4108 Deerfield Avenue. That is Lot 118 Pleasant Subdivision number one. There was a demolition board meeting date of May 27, 2021, and they had an order to make safer demolish by August 22 of 2021. There's been no current permit activity on that property. The SEV value is $29,400 with building value at $48,073. With that, I will move the show cause hearing.
We do have one speaker signed up on the show cause hearing, and that is Brenda Titus. Please come to the mic. You have three minutes.
Nope. The mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
That's the lectern.
Sorry. Yes, so the property, as of this Thursday, have a heat.
Guys there to finish up.
There you go.
Yeah, to finish up the heating. And then the plumber will get in there for one hour and those two will be able to get their inspections. And then right after that, the framer will get the inspection, like within the next week or two. And then after that, the insulator is all set. I called him today and he's ready. And then the drywalling and then the trim and the floors. So and the cabinets will be all set, I would say, within this month or so. And, and that's basically it. It's just been a process. My husband passed away three, well, about three years ago, and I've had to do this all in cash. He had a long illness, three years of cancer treatments, and it's just been a process. So that's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Vice President Wood.
This will be referred back to public safety, but ma'am, the, the next process for this is to come to the public safety meeting on January 20th at 4:00 PM. And Ms. Bulke is out in the lobby area and she can give you the information so that you can make this presentation to the committee and we will have code compliance there to tell us where the progress is.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we are to the referral of the show cause hearing.
Public safety.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters. And as I indicated, that is items five through 20 on the agenda, and the president has also authorized item 24 to be under legislative matters. And I did neglect to mention that the two late items, dealing with the vacancy, the acceptance of the resignation and the process for filling the vacancy are also eligible for discussion under legislative matters as they are going to be acted on tonight. We do have a number of public hearings that I will read into the record. Number one, obsolete property rehabilitation act district for 1102 South Washington Avenue for Rio Ventures LLC. We have an obsolete property rehabilitation act district for 224 South Washington Square filed by 1247 Center Street LLC. We have a special land use permit, SLU 1 of 2021, 611 North Butler, to allow for the construction of a surface parking lot in the RB, R6B Urban Detached Residential Zoning District. We have an amendment to chapter 1218 to conform to the Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Act, Michigan codified law. And we have an amendment to chapter 890 Poverty Exemption Guidelines Reform.
On the first public hearing, sorry, Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the first scheduled public hearing is on the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, the OPAH, and this is for 224 South, I'm sorry, it's not for 224 South Washington. I'm on the wrong one. It's for, I think it's 112, but I'm sorry, just give me a minute here. It's for 1102 South Washington Avenue. This is a building that was constructed in at about 1925. Our city assessor has provided us with a recommendation that the property is suffering from functional obsolescence due to the size configuration and lack of interior heating, plumbing and previous use. So that's why that's up for, for a public hearing, and I will move that resolution. Am I moving it? It's just, we're just, yeah, so that's, yeah.
Two, six, seven, and eight.
Yeah, okay. The next one is, is for a public hearing for the same thing, the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act for 224 South Washington Square, Lansing, Michigan. It's, it's the same thing. It's been determined by, you know, our city assessor that the building as, as it is, is functionally obsolete. What the, what this designation does though, is allow for the owners of this real property within this district, if it is established, to apply for an abatement of certain property taxes for improvements to their property located within the district.
And number seven.
Number seven is the consideration of the special land perm, permit use on 611 North Butler to allow for the construction of a surface parking lot in the R-6B Urban Detached Residential Zoning District. We have received comment from the Genesee Neighborhood and also comments from Aaron Williams, AL Williams Consulting LLC, which I would like to be part of the record. Mr. Williams is the owner of the property and the Genesee Neighborhood has also provided public comment against the special land use.
Appreciate that. And last but not least, number eight.
This is to amend chapter 1218 to conform to the Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Act. I, I wasn't here on that date, but I know that it is a requirement by Eagle, and so we are complying with the requirement from the state environmental agency for that.
Exactly, thank you. And two, the issue of amendments to chapter 890. Mr. Spatford.
Yeah, two, similarly as Councilmember Spitzley just mentioned, this is a reflection of change of state law. We're amending chapter 890, which deals with poverty exemption guidelines. And this is some reforms that were done back in 2020. We heard a little bit about these in December, I think, the 13th, from Ms. Fishman, about the bill, about, about the ordinance rather, in community as a whole. It changes the poverty exemption guidelines and provides a 100% exemption for applicants that are seniors on fixed incomes and individuals with disabilities. Further, the change would require the review of all property owners, not just the applicant, as is the current practice. So we're basically aligning city law to state laws that changed in 2020.
Thank you so much. Clerk's vote.
Okay, our first speaker is Hazel Bethia, followed by Aaron Williams.
Good afternoon to each and every one of you. I sit there, my glasses fogged up, so being the age I am, I guess I can read this. Okay. Our neighborhood does not support this request. As much as, as much as support small business, we believe there are other opinions to this business, for this business. Directly behind the business requiring the permit is an unused parking lot. Across the street is another parking lot. We believe that the business should work with each property owner to accomplish these, their needs. Our neighborhood has been struggling for many years to actively balance this and require, request does not go. This request is not human with the character of our neighborhood. We believe the decision could make a permanent effect on our neighborhood, and we work so hard to improve over the past, the past years. We ask that you review the pictures and understand our concerns. Please support us by voting no and helping to improve our community. Do not vote yes, or you will be condemning our neighborhood. And I'm quite sure all of you there have pictures of the property that we're talking about. So I would appreciate it if you would vote no on this. There's other properties that can be used better than what they're asking for now. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Aaron Williams, followed by Chuck Hallman.
Good evening, Mr. President and Council. I'm Aaron Williams, and I'm the owner of AL Williams Consulting. And I am requesting consideration for my special land permit use of 611 North Butler, which is currently a vacant lot. And I'd like to use that permit or request to utilize that vacant lot as a parking area. I had my comments here, and bear with me. I own the parking lot at 609 North Butler, which is just north of 611 North Butler. And my intent is to combine the 611 parking lot along with the 609 vacant lot and make it one parking lot for additional parking for the employees and also for the customers in that area. The proposed parking lot will not necessarily change the essential character of the area. It is merely intended to provide 10 additional parking spaces for existing use. If the special land use permit is approved, I will install a six-foot oblique fence on the south and west property lines. This is for the 611 vacant lot. And I will designate, designate a drive aisle located along the south property line so that the role of parking on the subject property will be north of the drive and hence all parked vehicles will be facing north as to not obstruct the, interfere with the neighbors in terms of traffic as well as headlights glare coming from vehicles. And I would also, will line the front of the parking area with a five-foot landscape buffer strip between the street and the parking area. And I also, we'll, we'll have a civil engineer prepare a site plan, which would include storm water management plan and submit for review.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chuck Hallman, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Hello, I'm Chuck Hallman. Live at 1014 West LaPire, which is around the corner from the property. Hazel, which is our president of the Genesee Neighborhood Association, I'm the vice president. A few other opinions on this. The 900 block of West Saginaw, on the even side, there's a city-owned parking lot behind that that has 93 spaces. And as I drove through there today, there was three places being used. And the property line on the south side of the property, where the existing fence is now, if he puts that lot in and still puts another fence up, it's going to be within probably five to six feet of that house that's sitting there. So yes, he might put a fence up, which will keep the headlights out, but it's not going to keep the noise out. So we'd like to, this property is also right now being used as a community garden. We need our green spaces. We don't need any more blacktop. So I'm saying to please vote no on this.
Thank you. Next we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Tony Hariford.
Couple of different things tonight. One is the setting of the public hearing for the special land use permit for Wise Road for a substation for BWL. And there's very little documentation that I could come up with online for that, so I don't know exactly what they have in mind. I would just caution you based on the experience we had with Scott Park and the Sunken Gardens and, you know, that whole history. So my advice is to just be very, very cautious. Ask hard questions. Make sure you touch base with the residents around that area and listen most to the residents and what they want, and least to the Board of Water and Light and what they tell you they need, because the two usually are going to be in conflict. And your job is not to represent the board, it's to represent the neighbors. Second, on the grant acceptance of the Michigan National Trust Fund for the parks and rec, three of the four look to me like very good uses of park village or city money or state money or wherever it's coming from. I do question though, why we would use $300,000 of that money to put in a park for McLaren Hospital. I would think that's something they should put in for themselves out of their own pockets. And then on the lighting issue at Regent and Bancroft Park, I heard what Mr. Kishinsky had to say, and I understand where he's coming from. I hope he also understands where the public is coming from, and that is to say that in spite of the rules that the parks close at dawn to dusk, people use those parks at night in the dark constantly, walking themselves, getting to and from late night or early morning jobs, walking their dogs, rollerblading, whatever it might be. We know from experience that there is a lot of traffic in and out of the River Trail at night. There's a lot of traffic in and out of the cemeteries, even though they're gated. There is still people getting into the cemeteries at night and walking and doing other things. So be realizing that when you take away those lights for people that are walking in Bancroft and walking in Regent or taking their dogs for a stroll or whatever it might be, you are impacting public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tony Hariford, followed by Nancy Malo.
My name is Tony Hariford. My office location is 1201 South Washington Avenue, Lansing, Michigan, 48910. I'm the, the project manager representing the BWL's Wise Substation project that Loretta just mentioned. It's on the agenda later this evening, number 18, to set the public hearing date for the special land use. We were asked just to provide a brief summary of the project tonight. It is a proposed new substation to replace an existing substation. The location is on Pleasant Grove, south of Jolly Road, directly south of Benjamin Davis Park, if you're familiar with the area. The benefit for the substation is, one, to replace the old substation, but also it provides benefit to us, helping us move forward in our Lansing Energy Tomorrow Program. The Lansing Energy Tomorrow Program is a major electric modernization program to upgrade and replace aging infrastructure with new, more energy efficient, reliable assets. We're doing our best to keep everyone informed about the project. We do have our website, lbwl.com, that does provide some information. We also have a phone number that people can call, so that's 517-702-6077. And then we also have a specific email address for people. And then we also have a specific email address for people, which is lansingenergietomorrow, all one word, at lbwl.com. In addition, Loretta, you mentioned public information not being available. The, there is a packet that went to the planning board overview. I think that's probably the best available information if the public is seeking it. It has our full planning boards middle in there that is available for download. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nancy Malo, followed by Evan Goodman.
President Hussein, Vice President Wood, Counsel Mayor Shore. I am here in regards to the removal of the lights within Bancroft, and mainly Bancroft, but at Regent Park. I understand what the park director is saying. However, this is a huge safety issue. Yes, we have an ordinance that says you're not supposed to be in the park after dark, but as you know, many, many people use the park at night. When they get out of work, they're walking their dogs, they're taking their kids for a walk. Right now, when we're dealing with a virus and people are trying to get out and breathe the fresh air, these lights are needed. They're needed for the safety. They're needed for the safety for our first responders. If they get a call, they need to be able to see what is going on in the, in the parks. So I, I'm asking you to, can we at least please stop any more removal? I know this is going to be referred to public safety, and thank you for that. There needs to be better communication with the neighborhoods, the friends of, of the parks, whether it's Bancroft or any other park. I understand, I'm, I'm not even sure if there was any discussion with the Parks Board. I understand also that, that the mayor wasn't aware of, of any of this. And, and after talking with some of the council members, you weren't aware either. We need to have transparency, and we need to be able to have the access to our parks in a safe manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Evan Goodman, followed by Ryan Kost.
Hello, Counsel. Thank you for having me up here. My name is Evan Goodman. I am a citizen of the city. I'm calling, I'm speaking here on behalf of the concern about the light removal at Bancroft Park. As we all know, there was no prior announcement of this. This is something that belongs to the public. This is something that requires the involvement and the comment of the public. As we see, that did not happen. And I believe that the public safety matters were addressed very nicely in the people before me. It's the great thing to be concerned about. We have a park that has lights in it, or it had lights in it. It made for a safe outdoor space where people could go and recreate and do that all times of the day, regardless of when, whenever the park closes, especially during the age of COVID, where we need to have more facilities open. 24-hour gyms aren't available at the moment. Those lights were away, people could get exercise over the course of the night. I think that we need to keep all this in account, too. Additionally, there is concern that changes are happening to parks that have not involved the approval of the citizens. And we want to ensure that we keep these parks available for everyone, for the whole city, and that we can all access them and use them and discover their great potential and be involved with it, too. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have Ryan Kost, followed by Kendra Lasowski.
Hi, everybody. I am Ryan Kost. I'm speaking about the lighting situation at Bancroft Park and Regent Park, since it was brought up. I had a, I had a speech, that's not me, so I'm going to play this by my heart. So Regent Park, I reported the light in the back of that late summer, this, this summer. It was burnout. It was bad. I reported the light after I removed 35 used needles. It took me almost a week to get all of the trash out of that park that had been dumped. And I was told that there's no way that someone would dump garbage in there because it's so thick. And that's the plan, is to let it grow over. I can tell you, as I had to cut through that thicket, people get back there, they use drugs, and I'm not, I'm not judging anyone. And they leave that there, and our kids come to those parks and they play. And that is not safe for our kids. Having a light there deters that kind of activity. As far as Bancroft Park goes, it was stated that those lights, power lines, caused an issue. It was going to be an issue. Those lights have been there since 1927. I have the news article in my pocket, from 1927, when they were initially installed. They were redone with WAP funds in 1938. Nearly 100 years those have been there in a forest with no issues on those electrical lines until now. And it was done without, I'm not a politician, so to answer the question that Vice President Wood asked, was LPD a part of the discussion when that was removed? The answer is no, they weren't. Because I didn't hear an answer out of the Parks and Rec director when he, when you asked that question. I heard a lot of, well, they, I talked to him about this part of the neighborhood. That is, is concerning. I sat back there the first night that those lights had been taken out. There was a person, a girl, that was walking, looking for lights with her dog. She was a regular jogger, I had seen her several times before, nearly got hit in the parking lot because, yes, they took every light out of there. There was not one light. It was pitch dark. This is not the Lansing that we all love. And I know we all love Lansing. My heart is with Lansing always. And for a walkable community that constantly is being talked about, I have seen that in action over in Potter Walsh, a walkable community. When you light it up, you fix up the park, you make citizens proud of where they live. I don't understand why we would take away from our parks that we have now, taking away special things that have been there for a very long time. Our parks are worth fighting for. A threat to one park is a threat to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kendra Lasowski, followed by Dwight Washington.
Hello and good evening. I first want to say that I do take a lot of pride in Lansing and its community and our parks here. This is regarding the light issue. I feel like with all the violence and crime happening in Lansing right now, if the lights are broken, we should spend the money to fix them and make it safe for our residents here in Lansing. I don't feel like we are doing everything that we can to ensure the safety of our residents, and I do not want to lose any more parks in Lansing. A lot of people that live in Lansing do live and take pride in Lansing because of our parks and how beautiful they are. And I would also like to necessitate that changes being made to our parks do follow the proper processes that are in place for those changes. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker for this section is Dwight Washington.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Dwight Washington from Bath Township, Clinton County. And it's been a long time since I've been here with the pandemic and, but I think that there's been a long history where I've been here. And it's just really kind of like brought about some of the perspective of being a county or a city council member. And I remember the only person who was still here from when I first started was Councilmember Wood. And it just shows just how long it's been. But I've also seen a, a great diversity in the board of the council, and that's really nice to see. I remember when it was pretty much all white males, and with the exception of Councilwoman Wood. But, you know, through there, there was a time when there was, if I remember correctly, where it was all women. And that was leaving a big footprint for all of you gentlemen to follow. And I hope that you are able to deliver as well as they did. My reason for being here today, though, is because I am a strong park advocate. And one of the things that I've found particularly during this COVID was that Lansing's got a really rich park system. And it's, it is something to be proud of. And, and sometimes it's overlooked when we think about where are you going to go do, have some fun. And it's so easy to look to the Great Lakes and to go up north. But it's, there's some treasures here in Lansing, the city of Lansing that really ought to be preserved and remembered. And Bancroft Park is one of those. And there's a great deal of concern because the city has lost parks in the past. And that concern has made people really emotional and sensitive to losing more parks that have been with us through, you know, pretty much the history of Lansing. When REOds decided to like make a, a Greenway for the city so that people, the public, not private citizens with money, but the public without money can just go and benefit from these natural resources, the exercise that goes with it, and even the social connections that are built with the parks. And again, that's something to be preserved. And what I, what I, I was hearing as a park, concerned park citizen is that we were going to lose this park and others, and that there was no involvement with the community. And I just want to say that involvement with the community is so important. And to be in front of this and create a narrative that Lansing does care for and protects the parks, it's been a campaign issue that people have gone to again and again, and it's something that should be honored and respected. And with the last thing I'd like to say is that, you know, with regards to lights out there right now, there's a group of us who are skiing. And with the tree or the leaves gone, it's like, it's, there is visibility, you can see. But I'm kind of concerned about when the summer comes and when the over, the foliage is there, you know, there, there won't be as much light. And people are more likely to be out and about in the summer or in the spring when it's warmer out than it is in the winter. So, you know, when you do go take this to public safety, please consider that the seasons could make a difference in how people respond. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was our final speaker. So we are to the referral of the public hearings. Item five, the Oprah District.
Development and planning.
Item six, the second Oprah District.
Development and planning.
Item seven, SLU 1 of 2021.
Development and planning.
Item eight, the soil erosion ordinance.
Development and planning.
And item nine, the poverty exemption ordinance.
Committee of the whole.
Okay, we are going to pull forward. We have a couple of appointments, so we move next to the appointment of Holly Seaberry to the Elected Officers Compensation Commission.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. We have an appointment of Holly Seaberry for an at-large member of the Elected Compensation Commission for a term that expires October 1st, 2023. And with that, I would move the resolution. And upon approval, if she could come down for her swearing in. So with that, I move the resolution.
There's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Come on down.
Right through the doors and right up here on the camera. Basically, all right. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of.
Of the Office of.
Elected Officers Compensation Commission.
Elected Officers Compensation Commission.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
And we are to the appointment of Lori Fuller.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. Before us, we have the appointment of Lori Fuller as a member of the Board of Review for a term that will expire January 31st, 2023. And after passage, if she could come forward for her swearing in. All those, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, there, is that a motion? All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Come on down.
You can see what I was about. Okay. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Board of Review Member.
Of the Office of Board of Review Member.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
All right, that does bring us to the consent agenda. Before I entertain a motion, are there other items? We only have three items left. Are there items that folks would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Councilwoman, oh, I am so sorry. You know what? We actually have to backtrack. Let me go back to, we actually have ordinances for passage. Vice President Wood.
I would move the ordinance, well, it's got to be read into the record, so that's.
I'm trying to be in two places at once.
It's a long one. Go ahead.
We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, re-adopting the codified ordinances of the City of Lansing. It's read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee of the Whole and is on the order of immediate passage.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. With that, I would move the readoption of the codified ordinances. And again, this is a process that we are doing yearly to make sure that all the ordinances that are in a tenure cycle are kept up and, and as part of that. So I would move the ordinance.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. Clerk Swol, would you take the roll, please?
On the ordinance, Councilmember Brown. That, that looks like a yes, a thumbs up. Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted.
I would move for immediate effect.
There's a motion on the floor for immediate effect. Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, now we are to the consent agenda, which is items 13 through 15.
All right. Are there any items that folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. The items that we have on the consent agenda is a tribute in recognition of the Greater Lansing Area Holiday Commission of Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. Also, a tribute in recognition of the City Human Relations and Community Service, Martin Luther King Memorial Observance. And a tribute in recognition of Judge Louise Alterson's retirement. So I would move the consent agenda.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to resolutions for action. We do have the two late items, the acceptance of the resignation.
Vice President Wood.
I would move the resolution for the acceptance of former councilmember, well, I guess he's still a councilmember till we adopt it, Councilmember Brian Betts resignation as of January 7th, 2022.
All right, with regards to the resolution of resignation for Brandon Betts, is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we have the replacement process resolution.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. At this time, I would move the resolution for the process. This would include applications that would be accepted starting Tuesday, January 11th through Friday, January 21st at 4:00 p.m. These will be done through the city clerk. Those will be, applications will be looked at to make sure they meet the qualifications per the charter. Then on Monday, January 31st, the Committee of the Whole will be held at 6:00 p.m. And we'll start the interview, the applicants. Then the. Then the council members will select three candidates for the next round of interviews. Then they, we will hold a Committee of the Whole on February, Tuesday, February 1st, and have an interview process for the finalist, no longer than 30 minutes per finalist. And then we will be having a, after the selection of the council member, to the applicant to fill the council member's position, we will hold a special council meeting on, after the Committee of the Whole on February 1st. And at that point, we will vote on the replacement. And then the replacement will be sworn in. So with that, I would move that resolution.
There is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have item seventeen, the Ad-Hoc Committee on Housing and Resident Safety.
Sure, I'm going to go ahead and pass the gavel. Wait to be recognized.
President Hussein.
Sure, I appreciate it. So council leadership is met, and we feel an absolute urgency in recommitting, taking a look at housing issues really across the city of Lansing. I can recall back, two years ago, it was actually at our organizational meeting in 2020. And it was precipitated by a conversation setting up pink tags going up on Autumn Ridge. And I remember at the time, I'm sorry. I remember at the time, Councilwoman Spitzley, I thought, spoke quite eloquently as to, you know, the myriad of issues, not just at that particular property, but really citywide when we were looking at specifically our rental housing that we were facing in terms of our housing stock, in terms of insurance, safe and appropriate housing for folks that, you know, doesn't just make people comfortable essentially in their housing, but helps them to ascend. And under the leadership of then-President Spatafor, we had actually established a ad hoc on housing and resident safety. I thought we got off to what was a tremendous start. And then unfortunately, COVID hit. And the actions of that particular ad hoc committee were suspended. Considering the realities of our housing stock before the pandemic, the fact that things have been maybe exacerbated to some point by the pandemic, we thought it was absolutely critical to re-establish this particular ad hoc committee. So with that being said, the resolution in front of you contemplates Councilwoman Spitzley as the chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Housing and Resident Safety, contemplates Councilmember Wood as the vice chair, and Councilmember Brown as a member. It also calls on the Ad-Hoc Committee on Housing and Resident Safety to report their findings and recommendations to the Committee of the Whole no later than September 1st, 2022. And it also contemplates the Ad-Hoc Committee dissolving by December 31st, 2022. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
We have motion on the resolution. Are there any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this point, I will pass the gavel back.
Okay, we are to item eighteen, setting a hearing for SLU Two of 2021.
Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is a deciding of a public hearing for Monday, February 14th, for a special land use permit for the Lansing Board of Water and Light Wise Roads Substation. They came before development and planning before the Christmas break and discussed the need to expand their substation there. One of the things that we asked was, why do you need a special land, excuse me, a special land permit for this? It is because of the expansion and the property that they're expanding on, and they need a special land use to facilitate the expansion. We did talk about making sure that they reached out to the public, and they assured us that they did. So with that, I would move the resolution to establish the public hearing to be set for Monday, February 14th, 2022.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have item nineteen, a grant acceptance.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. The resolution before us has one, two, three, four different projects, and I'll speak to all four of the projects. The first one is a grant for $300,000 along with the Capital Region Foundation supplying another $335,000 for the construction of an ADA accessible restroom, a river overlook deck at Lewdado Park. This is the second phase of this project. There will also be an eight-foot-wide concrete sidewalk that will lead to the overdeck and the boardwalk. There will also be picnic tables, bike loops, and an art structure in that area. The next grant is for $988,600. And this is, this grant, $300,000 of this is for goods and services. This will be a loop that will extend in the current pathway and Bear Lake through Fenner Nature Center. And this will create a loop in that area that will extend from Maguire Park to Jolly and Aurelius. The city's match in this is $688,600. So the grant that we are approving is for $300,000. The next grant that we have for approval is in the amount of $971,000. The grant is for $300,000. There's a city match of $671,000. That this grant will also be receiving funds from Ingham County Trails. This will go from the Corporate Research Park Development from Bear Lake and will attach to McLaren and the Corporate Park. And this, again, is a trail process that will go around McLaren. This is not for a garden or a playground or anything else. It's part of the trail system. We did ask and encourage the Parks Director to meet with McLaren and see, since this is something that could be utilized by their employees, to see if they would be amenable to help in the funding for this. And then lastly, we have a grant for $200,000. $150,000 of that is the grant. The $50,000 that is part of the sponsorship is coming from the Knutson family. This was June, Knutson left a memorial fund to the park system to help improve Francis Park Rose Garden. This will allow for the construction of ADA accessible sidewalk and ramp to the rose garden and other upgrades to the garden. So with that, I would move these grants.
There is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just confirming for the Corporate Research Park Path Development Project, that that is property that is owned by the city of Lansing? Or in, what is our ownership with that?
This would be part of the river, the river trail. It would, it would be what we own.
So it is not McLaren-owned property?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear because I think that was part of public comment. So we want to be clear that it is city-owned property and not property owned by McLaren. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And our final action item tonight is item twenty, Workers' Compensation claim.
And once again, Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This is a workers' comp settlement negotiation. It would be for $150,441. This is for a former employee that qualified for duty disability and Social Security disability. The law department, working with the Human Resources, supports this settlement. And this would then release the city from all past, present, and future claims against the city. So with their recommendations and the recommendation of ways and means, we move the resolution.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. If there's anyone wishes to speak tonight, you do have another opportunity by completing a yellow form in the next one minute or so. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Wood.
At this time, I would move that all reports from city officers, boards, and commissions, and communications, and other related matters be considered read in full, and the proper referrals be made by you, Mr. President.
There is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Sorry, passes.
Okay, we have items from the city clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on five.
Items from the mayor, setting a public hearing for Act One of 2022.
Development and planning.
And the related action item for Act One of 2022.
Development and planning.
Communications and petitions. Communication from Nancy Mailer regarding the removal of lights at Bancroft and Regent Parks.
Public safety.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Do we have any other council remarks? Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I just wanted to double down on the warming center conversation. I don't know what the criteria is, and it sounds like you don't exactly know either. But we all know that it's freezing, freezing cold. And there's really no, I mean, not having staff. I understand there's logistical problems. But it's important enough that we should find a solution. I know there's certain places open. But if there's anything the city can do to increase capacity and get more people inside, I think we should do it. City Hall has a lobby that's connected to a police station, and there's, I don't know, an on-call employee, at least one. It seems like we should find solutions. And I don't think anybody's going to let us, not that we want to, relax unless there is something in place. And I know this happened last year, possibly a year before. And, you know, I don't know what it's going to take, but we should find all solutions possible.
Thank you. Other remarks by council members? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I totally missed you.
It's all right. Just to follow up really quick on that, I'm sorry, I put my mask on. I was drinking. Just to follow up really quick on that, we just got a cold weather alert that it's going to be wind chill of ten below tonight. So it's going to be cold. Everybody, please take appropriate care, if you can, to be as warm as possible. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shaw.
Okay, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. We have Kyle Richard.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I'm here to speak on the vacancy in the First Ward. I don't live in the First Ward, I live in the Fourth Ward. But if this council's going to appoint successor, then this is definitely a citywide decision. One name that I've heard floated, not necessarily here tonight, but that I've heard floated is Jody Washington. And I don't know Jody personally. But in December of 2020, I found myself around a campfire over in the back forty, the vacant lot, corner of Larch and Chiawasi. And I had heard through my networks that they were running low on firewood and a big storm was coming in. And I had some dry firewood, and so I brought it out there. While I was there, they shared with me that Jody Washington and a crew of a couple, a couple others showed up to the back forty and were basically walking around like they owned the place, essentially playing white knight for the Hyde Company. Keep in mind, this is a time when Jody Washington is not a member of this body. This is Jody just moving around as a private citizen, going and talking to unhoused neighbors in a way that they described to me as, she talked down to us. She talked down to us. That's what they, that's what they said to me. And I don't really think that anyone who talks to unhoused people in our city in a way that makes them feel less than, in a way that makes them feel like they're being spoken down to, has any place in this body. And so I would ask council, during this process, as you're looking at potential replacements for the First Ward seats, to remove Jody Washington from your consideration. Thank you.
And that was our final speaker.
All right, with no other business for the body, we are adjourned at 8:50.